All right, welcome everyone to the October 6th, 2015 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Call the meeting to order Ms. Henson, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Luce?
Here.
Councilmember Mokel?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Mayor Tapke?
Here. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, consent business, anything to, this evening only, remove from consent? Anything to pull out? Councilman Lehman?
For E1 and F5.
All right. E1 and F5 have been removed from consent? Oh hey, we haven't approved the agenda yet, so we'll hold on to that one for just a moment, sorry. Item number three, approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections to the agenda? Thanks, Chris. Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the agenda? Councilman Lehman?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Senator Lieutenant Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Now consent business, we've polled E1 and F5. Anything else? Councilman Whiting?
I'll move the consent agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Councilman Whiting, second by Councilor Mokel. Mr. Reynolds, could you please read the consent business?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda items for October 6th, 2015. 4B1, adopt ordinance number 918, which amends section 8.30 of the city code pertaining to the operation of snowmobiles. 4C1, authorizes appropriate city officials to execute the Scott County Construction Cooperative Agreement for the CH16 TAC 31 project. 4C2 requires placement of moved utilities to be placed underground as part of the CSAH16 construction project. 4C3 adopts resolution number 7607, which declares the amount to be assessed, orders the preparation of proposed assessments, and sets a public hearing date for delinquent refuse bills, directs a $45 administrative fee be added to each delinquent assessment for city costs if not paid in full by the public hearing date, and directs a $25 administrative fee be added to each delinquent assessment for republic services/allied waste services costs if not paid in full by the public hearing date. 4C4 adopts ordinance number 917, which amends sections 3.02 of the city code, authorizing special assessments against properties having delinquent and unpaid charges and costs for sanitary sewer service. 4C5 approves a quote and awards a contract to Charred Tiling &amp; Excavating Incorporated for the CSAH78 sanitary sewer extension and approves a 10% contingency amount on this project for use by the city engineer and authorizing change orders or quantity adjustments. 4C6 approves a quote and awards a contract to Charred Tiling &amp; Excavating Incorporated for the Danube Avenue storm water drainage improvements and approves a 10% contingency amount on this project for use by the city engineer and authorizing change orders or quantity adjustments. 4C7 adopts resolution number 7618, which accepts the bids and awards a contract for the Patterson Drive storm sewer improvements, project number 2015 TAC 8, to Charred Tiling &amp; Excavating Incorporated and approves a 5% contingency amount on this project for use by the city engineer. 4C8 adopts resolution number 7619, which declares the cost to be assessed, orders the preparation of proposed assessments, and sets a public hearing date for unpaid utility, false alarm, and mowing bills. 4C9 approves the suspension of city code section 10.60, noise elimination and noise prevention subdivision 3, hourly restrictions on certain operations D, allowing work to start at 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays through November 21st, 2015, and directs staff to publish notice of the suspension terms with the conditions as recommended by staff. 4D1 approves position descriptions for IT specialists. 4D2 approves position descriptions for administrative assistants in the clerks division. 4D3 authorizes appropriate city officials to enter into a contract amendment for the continuation of OSHA compliance and safety services through the Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association. 4F1 approves the payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $2,107,956.38. 4F2 approves the minutes of the September 15th and September 22nd, 2015 meetings. 4F3 approves purchases of equipment and services from Alpha Video at a cost not to exceed $30,000 to be paid from the PEG Access Fund. And 4F4 adopts resolution number 7616, appointing election judges and establishing wages for the November 3rd, 2015 municipal election.
Thank you very much, sir. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. This is an item that is limited to five minutes per person. Anything, for anything that is not on the agenda this evening, is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, business removed from consent agenda discussed at this time. Councilman Lehman, item E1.
For E1, the concern I had was in the actual, the resolution, back page, second, number two. Since the city of Shakopee agrees to own, assume 100% operational cost for the facility and operate the facility for its extended purpose for the functional life of the facility, which is 50 years. My concern is that by entering into this agreement, we don't have the future ability, should it come necessary, to change up how it's operated. If, you know, example would be if you wanted to bring in Lifetime to do the fitness part, or YMCA as a partner, something like that. If you worked out some kind of arrangement, it might be not acceptable by this agreement. So, that's one concern I have.
Okay. Ms. Polly?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Councilor Lehman. This grant is for the ice arena only, not the community center portion. So, if that changes the thoughts on the grant, this is for the actual construction of the new ice arena. It has nothing to do with the community center side of it, and they're not attached.
Councilman Lehman?
Well, it mentions the $32.2 million, which is the total cost.
Right, because it's all under one project name when we're doing our construction and bidding. It is all under one project name, but it actually, as part of this, is only for the ice arena portion, because it only fits under that category of the Mighty Ducks Grant for new ice arenas.
So, what you're telling me is this would only lock the city into owning and operating for 50 years the ice portion?
Correct.
And what if we could have somebody else own and operate it more effectively than the city? Does that take away our ability to do that?
By this, I'm assuming it would, or you'd probably have to do some sort of a letter to the state of Minnesota if we're going to change that and have their approval on it, because this is a grant coming from them, but...
Okay.
Or repay the grant, I assume, correct?
Correct, probably.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion on this item? Councilman Whiting?
I'll offer resolution 7617, a resolution of the city of Shakopee, authorizing the city to submit a Mighty Ducks Grant program application for the new ice arena project and move its adoption. I can add the rest of that, too.
Please do.
Offer a resolution 7620, a resolution of the city of Shakopee, Minnesota, establishing the LGU for the Mighty Ducks Grant application and move its adoption.
Thank you, sir, do we have a second?
Second.
Senator Lieutenant Mokel, discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Councilman Lehman in dissent. Councilman Lehman, item F5.
After reading this, it seems like it's kind of lengthy, and I'm concerned it's going to take people away from participating. I was wondering if it would be easier to draft this a little bit shorter. I absolutely agree that you shouldn't have political campaigning-type stuff at the podium at city council. I agree that anybody speaking should be respectful. That's about the extent of my taking away people's rights. So, I think this goes a little too far, my judgment.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts? Do we have a motion? Councilman Whiting?
I'll make a motion to replace the recognition of involved citizens by city council, agenda item language as outlined.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Senator Lieutenant Mokel, discussion on the item? I agree with you, Councilman Lehman, that it is lengthy, but I also think that, in light of other things that have happened, that this is necessary. It's not a time for people to come up and make personal attacks and whatnot. It's business meeting, so that can happen at other places.
If I may, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Lehman, one of the other issues I think that's important is that we have a responsibility to provide notice to the public in regards to issues that come up as well. So, if, for example, an individual from the public wants to come in, and of course, they would like to come here and want resolution from council, one of the problems we have, though, is that if we're not noticing that fact to individuals that might have a different view, for example, we're not giving them the opportunity to come in and have their say as well. The other piece of that, obviously, is if staff doesn't know the issue, you know, I certainly would want the opportunity to give council a reasoned opinion on what the issue might be as well. So, it is more than just the language or how comments are directed at council. It really is that other notice piece I think that's important.
That notice piece has been in there for years to where anything that's brought up under concerned citizens isn't acted on. It's been that way for years, so to put that into words is fine. I support that portion, too. It's already known, and it's already followed, so I don't think that's an issue.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to two with Councilman Lehman and Luce in dissent. Item number 7A1, presentation of exterior design and interior floor plans for the new city hall. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I have a very brief, three-slide presentation to tee up this issue, and then I'm going to hand it over to the representatives of BKV Group, our architects for this project. As you will recall, we have been talking about the needs of the city for a city hall building for a little over a year now. The council did commission a feasibility study that examined four different options for meeting the city's need for a city hall. And at the conclusion of that feasibility study, the council direction was to pursue design of a new building that would be attached to the police station. Some key goals of that new building is it will provide us with a campus setup or environment, meaning that the city hall will be on Gorman Street where the police station is, where the Public Works Building is, and the engineering building as well. Obviously, this doesn't achieve 100% centralization of staff. Parks and Rec staff and the fire department in particular will still be located elsewhere in the community, but it certainly moves us much closer to that than we are today. The new building is being designed with an emphasis on customer service and employee connectivity. The building we occupy currently was not built to be a city hall, and you can tell that when you come in and move about the building. It's very compartmentalized. Key features like restrooms are in the basement and not on the main floor, that type of thing. We are also, one of our goals is to provide enhanced security for our customers and residents, as well as our staff that work in this building. The way the entrances and exits to this building are set up right now, and again, the fact that we need to provide ongoing access to the basement creates some security concerns. And lastly, a building that provides some additional community space for use by residents. The city currently has space at the community center, at the police station, and at the library, rooms that are available for homeowners' associations and Boy Scout and Girl Scout troops, and all types of community organizations that need meeting space. But what we have is highly utilized, and it is very common that none of them are available on a particular evening. So, we're looking to better meet that need as well. What's been done to date since the council entered into a contract with BKV is we have a committee of five staff members. That includes Mr. Reynolds and myself, city clerk Lori Henson, our building official Dave Kresel, and one of our planners Alex Sharp. And the five of us toured three different city halls along with the team from BKV. We went to the city of Ramsey, the city of Edina, and the city of Prior Lake to walk through their city halls, both the public and the staff spaces of them, and try to get some ideas of what would work best and meet our needs here in Shakopee. So, tonight, our team from BKV is going to present to you the exterior designs to give you and those watching an idea of what they propose the outside of the building would look like, as well as floor plans for the first and second floor of the building. The building is proposed to be constructed without a basement, which is true of the police station to which it would be attached. So, there are only the two floors to show you. The goal of the discussion tonight is to do a check-in with the council and make sure that you believe that the design is on the right track. If that is the case, the next step will be to move more into structural, mechanical, electrical-type design of the building. And we don't want to move into that phase only to come back and resize something or that type of thing. So, as you're listening to the presentation and looking at the images that are going to be provided, I would ask that you share any feedback you have if we are missing some kind of space or not meeting a particular need. If there's an area that you think is not needed that is in the design, we would like to hear that, as well as your reactions to the exterior of the building. So, who's going to go first?
Can we all just come up together?
Certainly, be my guest.
We like to share the joy and the pain together, we are a group.
Do you want this, or you want, what do you want first?
You know, I think, do you want to start with the overall images?
Yeah. Sort of come in and then fly into it.
Yep, sure. A little bit on the fly. But I think I'm going to do, following up on Mrs. Wilson's initial comments, just to fill in a little bit as well. So, again, I'm Bruce Schwartzman with BKV, a partner with the firm. I have with me Scott Olson, who is one of our lead designers, as well as Dwayne Jones, who's one of our senior managing architects that works with the firm. And this is part of the group. We've had a number of others that are involved, and as well of our engineers getting started as well. Based on the July 21st direction for the city gave us, and first off, I should say, good evening, mayor, council staff, nice to see you, sorry.
We're a very formal bunch, it's a good thing you pulled that in.
So, you know, based on the July 21st, we got started and kind of dug into, really taking the study to the next phase of understanding the programming, confirming the programming, and making sure we're all hitting in the right direction and that this suits the needs specifically of Shakopee. So, the tours that we did of Ramsey and Edina and Prior Lake, when we did that, it was looking at flow, operational flow. It was looking at the relationships of various staff and how the spaces that they had, and compared that to what the program was. And again, making sure that what's appropriate for your staff and how it flows. So, it was a very valuable, pretty much, day of touring the three facilities. And then, we debriefed at the end to say, what did you like, or what didn't you like? And how did that work? And it was very valuable for us, as well as, I think, the city as well. After that, we had a series of additional meetings. We met with DRC and went through the initial planning to make sure that the direction we were heading with the layout and the parking and the landscaping and the setbacks and all of that complied with the appropriate city standards. And then, we had another review meeting on September 17th, as well as the 24th, and a very good kind of feedback. So, the schematic phase, which we've just completed, really sets the tone, sets the direction for the site plan, for the building footprint, the spaces of the building, and the overall building design as well. So, at the end of schematic, you kind of lock that in. And then, as Chris said, as we move forward in design development, that's really when we start to integrate all the systems. We start to tie in all the mechanical, electrical, structural systems. We start to talk about the AV systems and how that work together, how the technology of the projection systems will work, as well as just a ton of other features. What will the dais look like? What will the height of the dais? What will the spacing be? A lot of details then go into the design development. The goal being that, as we presented previously, to come back at that February 17th council meeting with approval from the council at that point in time to potentially issue the project for bid. In our state, the best period to bid a project is really that late winter, that kind of end of January, February timeframe, because that's normally when contractors are looking for work. So, we find that we get our best bid results. So, our goal and our objective right now is to continue marching down the path to hit that so that we can try to get the best bid results for the city. With that, I think we're going to, Scott has brought some kind of three-dimensional views that help to define and show the design a little bit more.
Ready? Okay, I hope you all can see the, you got your screens there. So, this is an aerial view of your, the proposed campus, here with the Public Works, Engineering, the Police Department, and then here, the city hall, proposed city hall. And so, I'm just going to zoom in. Hope you don't get dizzy. And just take a look at sort of a bird's eye view at first here to see the connection from the, we're really trying to touch lightly into the existing police station. Not to cover up the detail and the work that's gone into that community room that's used so much. And the idea is to sort of create this public space in front of the city hall, truly as a welcoming into, sort of, set the tone, the image for the city. And so, what we can do is bring you down sort of into the, pardon me, I hope you're not dizzy here. But the idea is that we're taking cues from the existing buildings on campus, such as the police station and some of the materials from the other, the engineering and the Public Works Building, but really sort of making an assembly of, sort of, new assembly of these pieces or these materials to sort of create an image or an identity, oops, sorry about that, for the city of Shakopee. Zoom in here. So, you can start to see the pulling off of the brick and the window work from the existing police building in their community room. We're creating another community room in the corner here to sort of bracket this entry point, this colonnade, if you will, opening up into the entry, the main entry for the city hall. You can see the, sort of, the assembly of pieces here. The council chambers on one end, the main entry point, which is a sort of a higher volume, a large lobby volume that would have a lot of light in it, welcoming to people, to visitors. The community room on the south side here, and then the offices sort of stacked in behind. And I'm just going to do a little bit of a spin around here, so you can see. We were talking a lot in our committee work about the importance of this not being a sort of a front and a back type of building, that it had a presence from coming down Gorman, as well as, from either direction, from the north or the south. And the way that the site is set up is that the new parking along the front edge, but also staff parking along the back piece. And as we sort of zoom in, you can see sort of the staff entry along the back, and then coming around, there'd be a monument sign sort of announcing the building here. But really, it's the sort of civic plaza welcoming you into the city hall on the front side here. And we can, we sort of come back and forth, maybe, Bruce, to look at the renderings here and then the plans, and then come back and sort of be interactive. And you can ask me to sort of move around in different parts of this to show you if you have questions.
You know, in the way we look at this building, and I think you all know that not only have we done a number of facilities with Shakopee, but we've also done another set of city halls around the state and nationally as well. And it's always that kind of fine balance of finding that identity that best, an identity that best kind of, you know, expresses the image of who Shakopee is, what Shakopee is. And, you know, you're all moving in Shakopee. When you look at the businesses and the energy that's happening and will continue to happen to the city, it's really a showpiece to some extent. And we're not trying to create a showpiece, but it is where the Amazons and where some of these other businesses are now going to start to do business with the city. So, I think the important thing is what's that image? And what do you want that image to be for your city? And I think Scott's done a great job, as well as the whole design team, at taking it. And then, when Scott talked about that light touch, it's because you can't, you almost don't want to destruct the way it touches that existing police station. It's trying to respect that as well as create the kind of overall canvas. So, yeah, if we go to the plans, do we just get into this?
So, we'll switch on this, yep. And then, we'll grab this.
I like the way you took the mouse away from my hand, like you didn't trust me.
No, no.
Stay nice, here.
There we go. Is that a first?
Oh, yeah, let's, maybe let's just go to the...
Yeah, I think you have to roll that.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you. And I also want to reiterate to, or expand on what Chris said, that one of the primary focuses of the project, too, is to respond to the customer service focus of the project to benefit for the community as well. And the building is designed, in this case, one front door for the public. It does have the staff access through the back, but it does have one front door for clear organization. We'll see in the floor plan how that clarity is broken down into the organization of the building. The addition, of course, as you know, would be on the southeast corner of the site. The site has the existing police department, and there's a city-owned parcel in this location as well. We are utilizing that for some staff parking across the drive from the police garage or police parking area. And we are expanding some of the existing police public parking along here. I think we have an additional 20-some parking spaces, 83 total, I believe it is, out here. Get those numbers out, but... We're not doing anything back in the, in the police department, nothing in the back area back here regarding parking changes or anything. So, everything is all focused in this, in this part of the development. We are holding the building in this position, like Scott mentioned, trying to touch it lightly here. We are reserving some space in the future if expansion should occur to the south. And currently, we're showing some placeholders right now for some stormwater drainage ponds. We're going to move further into that in the next phase with, you know, the assistance of Bruce Looney and Joe Sventek and their staff to design the critical elements of the stormwater design for the site at this point. And as Chris had mentioned, there's no basement planned for this building. It's a two-story building, no basement, as is with the police department.
And part of the basement issue, too, is there's rock on the site, so I could, sorry, mayor. There's rock on the site as well, which has an impact as well.
Yeah. Oops.
No, here, here, you roll down there.
Okay. This is the main floor, the first level floor plan of the building. As I've mentioned prior, you know, the focus being customer service and having the one front door, an easy orientation for customers as they work with the city staff. So, from a client or a public perspective, kind of the process of moving through the building occurs first primarily at the front door. And the organization along this kind of open lobby space here, connecting not only the existing community room in the police department, which would be open into this space as well, and a new one on this end, on the south end of the building.
You might want to use the mouse, because they're looking on their screens.
Oh, is this helpful if I can?
Yeah.
You probably couldn't see the pointer on the screen.
Cone, anyway.
So, I apologize for that. This open lobby space here is intended to be kind of a connector, as well as an orientation device for the public as they enter the building and look for the departments that they need, which, besides city council chambers here, which is oriented also to open up to a larger portion of the atrium and entry space here for overflow and for additional spectators. The city council chamber itself has got seating here shown for 54 seats and loose chairs like these. And of course, the dais, we talked about having it in a raised position with the appropriate amount of audio and visual technology. The community room on this, we're calling this a community room on this end here is built for training, as well as public meetings. The seats, oh, what do we have here, 32, with training tables as well. There is also a conference room here in this location, and over here in this location also, seating approximately 12 people, with easy access again off of this main spine of the building for the public access. Back of house is all staff administrative spaces, office spaces, departments. If I'm going through the corridor here as a customer from the public, I see planning, sorry if I'm not reading this correctly.
Building and engineering.
Building, planning, and engineering counters open to the corridor. If public is meeting with those staff privately, they would come out and invite them in. them in and meet in this location. I think if we can go up to the upper level. There was a main staircase in this location here, an open staircase that came from the lower level up to the upper part of the lobby here. There's a administrative reception counter at this location, which is staffed by, staffed in this, over in this location over here. In this position here, customers are really allowed to move in this, this, this area up here with conference rooms, again, one smaller one and one larger one here. Past that, it's, it's basically staff access through the back here. There is a training room at this, in this location, which is used primarily for staff training and, see if I'm missing anything important here. Oh, an internal stair. This is something that we saw on some of the tours, especially at Ramsey facility. There's an internal stair here which allows staff to communicate and directly access each other without having to maneuver through the public live or through the back exit stair, which would be secured. That's, that's an important feature that identified on the tours. I think that's, that's what I'd like to cover on the floor plans. Should we go back to the exterior?
No, I think, I think we've kinda gone through the, the overall design, the design direction, the plan layouts and the proposed plans and the site plan. As I mentioned, the goal, potentially if things proceed forward, to hit that timing, that timing. And, and we talked about next steps as well. So that kinda lays out the schedule. There'll be, our, our process is very client-driven, it's very collaborative. So like we did with schematic design where we had multiple meetings, we'll do the same thing for design development, there'd be multiple review meetings. Because when we select lighting fixtures and plumbing fixtures and all these things, we wanna make sure everybody's aware of it. Your, your facility maintenance individuals are aware of the systems that we're looking at specifying, so we'll go through all that. Once we go through the design development phase, the next phase is really into construction documents. And all we're doing at that point in time is really crossing the Ts and dotting i, adding the fine detail and the fine, fine items of final information before we come back in February. So at that point, I think if the council or the mayor have any questions, we're here to kinda talk through it with you.
Thank you. Councilman Lehman.
Couple of questions, Mayor. The first one is function over fashion. I wanna make sure that function is the priority and fashion is secondary. Obviously, cost is, is an issue. And then I noticed that there's showers in here. And I'm not, I don't think we have showers currently, so I'm wondering what they're, what they're might be used for.
Sure, I can answer that question.
Councilmember Lehman, the currently City Hall is the only city building where we have full-time staff where we don't provide shower facilities. Police, fire, Public Works, Parks and Recreation all have shower facilities. With an increasing emphasis on wellness, we wanna support those employees that wanna be able to run or bike to work or on their lunch hour or something like that. That's a continuous request that we get from our employees currently. We've looked at how could we put shower facilities in this building and we continually hit a brick wall that hasn't, we haven't found a way to, you know, do that here. But that was a staff, you know, goal for the new building is the showers.
No, I do recognize them from a safety aspect. You know, if you get something in your eyes and you wanna jump into a dump shower and flush it out or whatever. Next question. The service counter space for building, planning and engineering is, looks like there's two clients being serviced at a time potential, right? What, what do we currently have here?
I believe that the counters you see shown for building and planning are roughly equal to the, the width of the counter that we have here.
Okay.
Generally, there's one primary staff person that's going to greet the customer, but it's not uncommon to maybe give a customer some paperwork, have them slide down a little bit, work on that, and then be able to try to help the next person in line to keep things, you know, flowing when possible. And sometimes you'll have more than one city staff person approach the counter in order to solve a, you know, an issue or answer a question. You've got a planner and a building inspector with their heads together on the staff side, both, you know, assisting the customer on the other side.
I guess I just wanna make sure that we're comfortable that two lanes are, are enough.
I think so. You'll also notice over, if I can get the mouse, here along this wall of windows, we've created an alternating row of standing height counters and then sitting benches and then a standing height counter and then a sitting bench.
So you can do your paperwork there.
So you can move back there to do your paperwork. It's also not uncommon for us to see homeowners come in with young children and so on, so the benches, we hope, will be, you know, a nice feature for that, on that side. If I might, there's just one thing that wasn't noted in the design review that I think Mr. Reynolds and I felt was important. And that is, you'll notice that this middle space is, is open here to one of these different pods, and this is just a long row of offices. Our idea here was that we wanted the flexibility. If the engineering department gets a little bit bigger and the planning staff shrinks a little bit, those lines between departments and divisions are very flexible and mobile. Whereas in this building, we have issues of, okay, we've got three offices in a group, I need a department that has three people in it because that's all I can fit in this space. So the goal here, both on the first and the second floor, was to keep this open in the sense of there might be cubicle walls, but not fixed walls. So that as the staff changes over time and department sizes change, we have that ability to reconfigure this central space and use it in different ways. Also, you'll notice, you know, the development services are right here on the first floor. They are our services that generate the most, you know, foot traffic into the building. You've got the receptionist right here on the front with the easy ability to greet the public and their ability to direct them immediately up the stairs for the city clerk's office, which would be the main service on the second floor to which the public might come to get a business license or have something notarized or something like that.
Two more. The white spaces that weren't touched on are future spaces on both floors. And I guess the question I have for that is what is the life expectancy based on population for them white spaces?
Yeah. Councilman, when we, when we first did the planning, we looked at a 15-year projection.
Fifteen?
Fifteen-year projection.
Okay.
And, and a lot of times, similar to police department, what we've done is if you're planning like a six-by-eight workstation, you can actually get more workstations in if you go to a six-by-six or you, matter of fact, we're doing a project right now with Hennepin County where they don't even want cubicles. It's more of a linear desk where people have smaller kinda hoteling stations or whatever. So I think there's processes and there's space to allow for future expansion, but at very least, we planned for 15 years. And I think we've looked at the ability to, one of the options we looked at was the ability for part of that building if ever needed in the future, not to go vertically, we didn't approach that, but to be able to extend that section further to the south.
Hold on just a second, Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, and, and if we can, can we go ahead and take a look at the second floor? You can see a couple places where we've actually designed current space. For example, if you look off to the, the left, you'll see the storage space that is there, but you'll also see two windows there. The, the whole purpose of that is, is at some point, if we need more space, we can move out the archives that would be stored there, put them in another facility or for long-term storage, and then use that also as office space. Clearly, you've got some, on the second floor, there's a little more room than there is in the bottom floor, but we have the same concepts in regards to having that open space that although currently would be not used, is something that we could grow into over time as well.
So just so I'm clear on this, I'm looking at a lot of white space that's future space. At, at least in the key, it says future on the top right of the page. If, if that's included, besides redesigning what's already being used, why am I thinking we're gonna get more than 15 years out of this?
I, I will tell you, I certainly hope we would. Because as I've been telling everyone as part of this process, if we come back in 15 years and say we need an addition, I think the reality is, is we're not going to get an addition. And that we need to make sure that we're flexible enough that whatever staff that we have at that time, that we're gonna have space for them. And that can include both internal movement and external, recognizing that if the engineering department is moving, that the engineering area will also can be used as, as alternative spaces well later down the road.
And the last question I have was your community room out front. It, it would appear that that room is designed to be freestanding to a point to where community groups can use it after hours? Is that a good assumption?
It is. They would, the vision would be they'd still enter through the main doors here, but all of these counters are secureable, as are the doors with key card access. So people would come in and have access, access to this corridor, which provides you with the restrooms and the vending and then access to this space down here in the evening without the ability to get into the staffing areas. It does have direct exits, but those are more emergency or fire exits than the intention that people would come in or out those in the evening. We would still have the lights on here and expect people coming and going through here.
Other questions? Councilwoman Whiting.
Just a few comments. You know, I, you do see a lot of conference rooms and to talk about future space in a pinch, if you did get a lot of, or employees, you could potentially use some of that conference space too. I do like the idea of having multiple spaces though to utilize for, especially the one down by planning and building where if you do have a big developer come in, they could meet with planning and, you know, the inspectors and things like that at a conference table for laying out bigger plans and things. I like the security aspect of the building. That inner stairwell was pointed out to me and we talked about that a little bit and I think that's a great idea too, be able to work from the office space upstairs to downstairs. And the public space is greatly needed in this city. And the health and wellness thing, I didn't even think about that as looking at the showers, but that's, it's a good point. I noticed the bike rack in the back too, that, can't imagine where that came from, but I'm sure we had a couple input on that. I like the idea of room to grow. It did change from our initial concept plan when we were first looking at it, but I, I like the look of it. And so I think moving forward, we'll, we'll see more detail, I'm sure.
Councilwoman Mogul.
I hear your comments too. I like more of the open collaborative environment and I also like the outdoor atrium for the staff that likes to eat outside, so that's a, a nice touch to the top.
Councilwoman Lewis, do you have anything?
Good.
Okay. I have a couple of questions with, can we go out to the campus view?
Yeah. The, oh, the, like the Google Earth view?
Yeah. Well, if that's a pain, don't worry about it.
No, it's not at all.
Okay. While you're getting that, I think the building looks really nice. I think it looks great and is very much the look and feel of what we want in the next City Hall. But as we're looking at this, the whole thing, so as our plan with the engineering building, it'll, it'll be empty for now, right?
Public Works overflow.
You're, if engineering is to move.
Okay.
The, the bigger issue is, is what do we do with that building? And, and not only could it be storage space, but there was comments is that, you know, from staff that we have the showers, what about a workout space? Well, we also could look at that, you know, spaces, workout area as well. But it's definitely gonna be overflow space for the, for the future, you know.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, we do have the facilities maintenance staff, which is currently housed at City Hall, programmed to be in the engineering offices. Moving forward, we have not created a space for them in the new City Hall. And when you say it's empty, it would really be the office space in the northeast corner that's empty. Public Works uses the vast square footage of the building that's in, you know, garage door bay type environment for their purposes.
Okay. And my main reason for asking that is that as we look at the whole thing as a campus, my only thing that I think we need to do a better job on with this is connecting the buildings. So that it works as a campus between everything and not, I mean, that obviously the police department and the new City Hall look great and work really well together as a cohesive unit, but as we look at the entire campus and whether that's landscape plans or egress, I'm not sure how that works, but just so that the whole thing fits together and everybody understands. And I don't know if that means that we need to do some updating to the other buildings to make it all fit together or, or what that is, but just think about that as we go into it.
That would be a fun challenge to our landscape architect, to give some thought to that, you know, to try to create a campus environment. You'd hope the buildings, I think, start to blend some, but how he could achieve that, so.
Right.
It's a good, it's a good idea.
That was my main concern with it as well as safety aspects, and I had another question that escapes me now, but I, I do think it looks really good, so thank you.
The building will be, I mean, one of the things is like Dwayne was saying, with the single point of access, it helps to control things. You don't have people, multiple points wander through the building. We can control that. Of course, the dais will be designed with all current technologies as far as Kevlar protection in the, in the dais itself. It will have duress alarms, cameras and all those types of things. Plus, the council chamber is designed such a way that there is a door that allows in the event of an emergency, council to get out of this space and be in a safe, separated area. So we'll do everything we can to put those kind of safety and security issues in place.
Thank you. I remember what the other thing was, is to make sure as you get into the next phases of everything in the conference rooms and meeting rooms and all kinda stuff, that we have good levels of technology in those, which I'm assuming we've talked about, but I think the council very much support making sure that they're functional, usable rooms with, with good amounts of technology, so.
I'm a redundancy guy. If technology goes down, you still need to be able to operate.
So, is there any other questions or comments from council? Is there anything specific you need from us or does that get us where we need to be for right now? Do you have any questions that we need to specifically answer? No? All right.
Just, just for comments, if there were any comments specifically or concerns that we need to address.
Nope, I think it's good. Thank you. Oh, Councilwoman Whiting.
Well, one other one I can throw out. Today we visited Blue Lake's solar facility. Would, for conversation's sake, I don't see that, that solar could be utilized and, with design anyway on this building, but possibly utilize something across the street on engineering or is it possible to put something like that on a building like this?
Absolutely. I, I would think so, yeah. That would really be worth looking into and what that, you know, the cost and the payback kind of option of what that could be. We could easily look at that.
I don't wanna add anything to the, the cost factor of the design here right now. I just want, conversationally, look at that.
But if, if, if it's, for kicks and giggles, if it's $150,000 and it's got a four-year payback or a five-year payback, the council might say, you know what, that's a decent payback and after that, it's all, it's all profit. So I think it's worth looking at. We can easily do that kind of analysis and give you that information.
What we should do is convince our liaison to Spock to get our power for free.
Well, I haven't been doing much convincing over there lately, but... So I think it's worth at least a, a look. I, I like the way it's designed and I hate to take away from that, but there is a lot of options out there to get other people to pay for this with grants and things. Maybe it's worth taking a look at.
In, in my opinion, personally, if you saw some solar black panels leaning up on the roof, that's just, that's just the city showing everybody else we care about our environment, we care about our energy. And I think it's a good thing. I don't think it necessarily attracts from the building, yeah.
While we're on this view right now, how would the, if expansion sometime decades down the road, would need, how would that fit in there?
Yeah, we, we've talked about that, that, you know, the natural sort of curve of this, this extension of this, this form coming out into this, this area here. We also talked about possibly ending it and pushing it out to the, to the east as well. There's obviously some space here, we'd have to reconfigure the road a bit, but, you know, the space here or the space on, on the east side that made the most sense because of the expansion being most likely the part of the office is either on the first or second floor to be able to pull it out that way. And of course, that's another design challenge, yeah.
Wonderful. All right. Anything else? All right, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to item number eight. Any other business from council? Councilwoman Whiting.
One item I'd like to talk about. Last night at the Spock meeting, they talked about some things going on over... Last night at the Spock meeting, they talked about some things going on over in Canterbury's parking lot, and in case any of the citizens are noticing, hundreds of telephone poles going up in the parking area, the overflow parking area. That is for the American Public Power Association's annual line workers rodeo. So if you see telephone poles going up, you're wondering what's going on, they're trying to get those seated before the frost comes in. That'll be coming up in April, and we're, we're very fortunate to have this kind of excitement here in town, and look forward to learning more about it, so just wanted to point that out.
Very good. Anything else? Seeing none. Item number nine, I'm going to motion to adjourn to Wednesday, October 14th at 7:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Wednesday, October 14th at 7:00 PM.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Whiting. Any discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass it unanimously, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.